Give him just two seconds to get on. I believe, I just got a text from Rob Arbor, he was jumping on.
Rob Arbor.
Yeah, I didn't think I was gonna make it time.
Oh.
We were both sprinting up the hill.
That is looks like.
Davia is on the plane for minutes, so she couldn't match up the times. Alright, let's go. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Bogota Board of Education for July 30th, 2024. Please stand for the flag, Susan.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public body that which any business affecting them is discussing or acted upon. This order will be provisioned with that. The Bogota Board of Education has passed the law, this will be published by having the agenda, date, time, and place there all posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the Club of the Bogota, of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Mrs. Alcalde?
Present. Here.
Mr. Oliver. Mr. Oliver.
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Cruz?
Present.
Mr. Navarro?
Present.
Mrs. Olivo?
Present.
Ms. Racket?
Present.
Mr. Miranda?
Present.
We have the court?
That works, circulation.
What difference?
No man. Okay, also President Superintendent Board Attorney, Board Attorney Thomas Cohen, School District Administrator, Board Secretary Ervonne Absinthe, and Assistant Board Secretary.
She's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. And absent is Secretary Elizabeth Ruiz. I'd like to open the floor to hearing of the citizens on Agenda Items Only. Do I have a motion to move?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, is that a second, Mrs. Racket?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Does any member, please state your name. You have five minutes to address Agenda Item Only.
Hello, hi, good evening. And thank you for the opportunity. I'm Susan Harper. I am first, just like to file an objection concerning the agenda today. The agenda that's on, that was online, is different from the agenda that's here. This one's more specific. This is general, and it does not put the public on notice with respect to what the, what this board is going to be discussing. Further, further, I saw that there were no documents linked at all to this meeting, although it seems like that there are several agreements and grants, deed notices that may be related to some sort of environmental issue, deed modifications, as well as other deed notice regarding flood hazard. None of these were posted online to put the, to put the public on notice. And finally, with respect to these, with respect to these, a lot of this, this particular project, because it relates to this, as everybody can see, it's exceptionally hot out. We are in the hottest time period. I'm not making this up. People, our climatologists have said this over and over again. New Jersey is heating faster than any state in this, in this, in the country because the waters are rising. And the idea of the fact that this board is going to cut down all these shade trees when we see people who are playing outside every single day, who are sitting underneath there, including all the school kids who are the recreation kids, you know, who are going to the camp, as well as all the soccer kids who are there every day. I invite you to come down and take a look for yourself and feel the real feel down there. As a resident, it is exceptionally hot. It is hot. And the president, Mr. Miranda, just turned around and opened up all the windows, and you have AC here. Please, please take it into consideration. Thank you.
Can you address?
Yeah, so when you have a special meeting, what needs to be posted is the agenda to the extent known. Okay, I think your comments done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So you publish the agenda to the extent known. On the agenda that was published, the titles of the resolutions are on the agenda. And one of them we're not gonna move, 3.5, we don't need to move tonight. So that one's not gonna be moved, but that's all that needs to be done to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. So the agenda that was put out there to the papers complies with the Open Public Meetings Act. The documents that are approved in a meeting, okay, are not public documents until they're approved. Okay, so to put them out there to the world, you don't need to do that to comply with the law. Boards sometimes will do that on certain things, but you don't need to do that. It's, it's bad practice, in fact, to do that, because things can change. There are documents that are what's called deliberative under the Open Public Meetings Law until they're adopted. Okay, so everything we've done here, and we're gonna do here, is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Okay, and what, what we're doing here is this project has been approved by the town, by the board. It's been a long time in coming. These are some procedural hoops that we have to jump through based on the DEP's permit. So these are like a conservation restriction deed that needs to be followed to memorialize the public's right to certain access along the river that exists anyway. We're just, the DEP's making us put it in a deed notice. That's one of these documents. The amended Shared Services Agreement is being amended based on what the DEP wants. The DEP wants to be indemnified, things of that nature, so we're doing things like that. They want to make sure that both parties, the borough and the, and the board are gonna comply with the green acres restrictions that are on a borough property, so they want certain other things put in that. The term of that is now gonna be 15 years with a 10-year renewal, as opposed to what we approved back in, I guess, April, which was 25 years. So it'll be 15 and 10, which is fine. And deed notices have to do with the fact that because of the river being there, the DEP wants to put the public on notice that you shouldn't park, you gotta be careful if you park down there, if there is a situation with flooding, and you can't have people inhabiting any structures down there. That's one of the deed notices. Okay, the other deed notice has to do with that there's a stormwater management system, which is essentially a screen over guys. It's very non-complicated, very rudimentary. That's the stormwater runoff. The borough's gonna do one of those too, and the borough's gonna do all these deed notices except the conservation one. So these are all hoops we gotta jump through for the DEP, and to start construction on the first, we needed to have a special meeting tonight to get those, these, some of these deeds recorded. So.
There's no hesitation.
For the record, Mr. Attorney Toby, explaining why it's compliance. Secondary, we do not have a condition as you care. It's a fan, that's why I go over there, circulating the air. And third and foremost, although I've been away, I have several text messages, phone calls, parents, children, who are, and I know I'm not the only one, because you're all asking me every day, what are we putting down, what are we putting down? Every single parent that I have run into has basically said, where are you breaking and doing our parks? Our parks, the work on our D parks, our parks. So to reference or remove that there's people suffering, or that there may be a possibility, I get it, and I totally understand. That's not the case. Parents want parks. The parents want parks. People who are children, elderly people that I've met, seniors in the same age, they want something to walk on. They can't walk on what exists. I wanna say all that, you know, I know this board is exhausted with this discussion, and I know you're exhausted. I'm, I'm exhausted. I've been having the meetings with the DEP, two and a half hours recently, and we've had to answer a lot of questions. I think it's, it's actually the worst for trials, and this is the worst I've ever seen. And, you know, they mentioned that a lot, you know, there's just a handful of people really trying to tackle this project. And then, and then, the best thing that I thought was, I just can't see why they can't come together to try my best. I think on three occasions, they said that it's unusual to see a board of education and a town working together like this. Isn't that active? They said it's just so unusual. They can't, you know, they just said, it's a beautiful word for it. It's really nice, it's a beautiful thing that you work together. Because nothing that we've done hasn't been by way of discussion with the both entities of the borough. Anything that we try to do is all of involved, and we have heard, you know, to say, you know, we're doing everything we can to protect those little trees, and, and, and they're gonna be, that's the key. We're gonna, gonna cut out, we'll move them off, we're trying to do the best we can. However, it was also Bogota that a licensed arborist, an attorney, an engineer, licensed arborist, said that those trees fall in danger in the future, that they're dying, that in order to raise a bit out of elevation, I don't know, I wonder again, because I am actually very exhausted, and I hope this is actually becoming a good thing at some point in our lives in Bogota. But, you know, one of the things I want to point out, there was a, a mild discussion about what would it be as a budgetary requirement to the board, et cetera. I mean, to the council, the mayor, council, the borough, right, the Green Acres of our borough. It's funny, because the biggest tax rate is here, the children of the future are here, but there's an equity protecting them, and we don't know where we're protecting ourselves from all residents, no, really. So it's funny how that plays out, but one of the things that came up was if there was an extra expense, are they not even gonna be able to afford other parks? And I think that people often talk about towns in a very broad manner. We only have one park. And, and I said, what expense? It's one, it's all we have. This is all we have. There's nothing we can do but enhance. All we have. This is how small is that one? This is what we have. It's either very disgusting and broken the way it is, or we enhance it and we make it better. And, you know, you can tell, they were like, oh, that's right, it's a square block town, and only has one park. So it's so hard to please everybody when you only have one. We have playgrounds, but we only have one park. And, and this board, the administration, to share the experience with the town. And they were impressed with that too. They're just so impressed that we're actually working and communicating. And I gotta tell you, you know, it's not just the board. Everybody down in council, at least for the most part, and everybody here all working together, competition, it has this reason. Everybody's on it, everybody's at school, so it's a beautiful thing. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, wanna be promised, spreading that at the end of the day, this little town is working together, and it's like, and as I was saying, it's it's not, it's rare, and almost unusual, so, so I just wanna put that out, but it's, it's still beautiful thing. Whether in the parks, the trees, or the roads, go work together, and I think that's what every resident will know that I say, let's just work together. Alright, Mr. Kenny? Do I vote? Do you vote? I don't see. Got a motion to call?
Motion.
Chavez, second. Mrs. Racket, all in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. You wanna say something?
I think what you were referring to was the warrant notice. But we're not, where I think that the agenda, that's what the park or, so that's always online, you know, that. So when you're referring to is the notice of the meeting, where we have the list, the required for meeting time, but it wasn't something. That's, that's notice. Excuse me? The agenda I'm looking at on board docs, that's what is printed out. Board docs has the agenda. Where you, where you have your underhand is the forward notice of the meeting. That's telling you about the meeting, special meeting. When it's a special meeting, we have the list, why we are meeting, it's not a normal scheduled meeting. That's why I list those four things on that. The board's agenda is online, that's always board docs. That's where you can always find that. And just that we're doing our new information, the Bixby School notice went out to the parents, I believe it is.
Seventh and eighth.
It is August 6th, 7th, and 8th. So that'll be happening at Bixby School, I believe 2nd, 7th. That went out, and we'll be sending that out tomorrow, and the principal will send that out as well.
Okay, so we're at the top, only 1, 3, 1, 6, so we're not moving that.
3.5.
I'm sorry, 1, 5. Moving on to 4, 1 section.
We gotta approve, you know, we have to approve 3, 4, 1 through.
3, 6, we're in 3, 1, 2, 3, 4, ready?
Yes.
2, 3, 4, do we have a motion or two, resolution, 3, 5, or just 2, 1, 3, 1, 2, 3, 4?
Motion.
I don't know.
One of us is it?
I don't know. Motion.
Chavez, do you have a second?
Alvarez.
Alvarez, any more discussion? Call. Mrs. Alcalde?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo? Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda? Carried, motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to 4, 1. 2, 6, 4 again.
You didn't do 3, 6, did you do 3, 7?
3, 6 became 3, 5.
3, 5, that was safe, I'm sorry.
Right. 3, 6 became 3, 5.
Got it, got it.
3, 5.
Got it, yes. Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to move? Open. Alvarez?
I'll call me.
Alvarez? Alvarez, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Please state your name, you have 5 minutes.
So with respect to the amended restated shared services agreement, that agreement was already agreed to, it wasn't proposed agreement, Mr. Holben? And so I would assume that something like that would be submitted to the public, so they could at least see with the strikeout where the amendments are. With respect to the park and everything dying, I know you keep saying everything's dying. You keep saying everything's dying. Like, oh, things look like they're bloomed there. Every.
That finished?
No, everything, so everything's dying. However, there are people there every single day. There has been a community day, there has been a disability event. There have been the track, the people practicing track, there have been people playing soccer, there have been kids playing with their parents, playing baseball. There are people sitting underneath the trees on a daily basis. And there's, there's, you know, I mean, and, and you have been saying this, that this, that these, that these are dying. You've also said that these are disgusting, that our park is disgusting, and I really take offense to that. Okay, I take real offense to that. I'm a naturalist, and I believe that our environment is beautiful. And these trees are beautiful, but maybe if you would go down there and actually spend time instead of seeing what's bad and broken, and look at what's good. Thank you.
I wanna address the trees, because I've sat here silent for months on this, and every single step that we were asked to take, we took, we engaged. First, we numbered the trees that we intended to take out. We landed at a number. Then we engaged the arborists at the suggestion of the council, and the arborist that is familiar with this town came back to us and recommended additional trees above and beyond what we asked, and the stated reason was because the trees were in disrepair and dying. I don't believe anybody on this board is an expert and or capable enough to make such a determination, so we went to that person and we got that. I get it. I don't wanna see a tree damaged any more than I wanna see the plants in my house that I continue to not do well with. However, if, and once given that as a, a recommendation by an expert, it's our duty to take that recommendation. Again, we said we wanted to do X number of trees, and we were then asked, hey, could you include these others because they're equally as bad? Lastly, we then went back to our folks and said, could you put in more shrubbery? Granted, it won't be mature as these trees are here. There is really no road forward that allows us to give to our community the enhancements that they want and that we see fit, and live within the confines of not touching a tree. Because we recognize that the trees are somewhat tearing up the very park that we're talking. Folks can't run because the pavement is uneven. Why is the pavement uneven? Because roots are lifting it up. We are looking to mitigate a bunch of different things and be able to provide an enhancement. That means that, yeah, there's probably gonna be a drawback on the other side. And unfortunately, that sounds like some trees that in the future are gonna cause us some issue anyway. And to mitigate that today, in my view, does feel much better than waiting for an eventual poor outcome.
I, I'd like to add something too, real quick, just because you said, you know, Frank said that the trees were dying. And it's not Frank saying the trees are dying, it's the arborist saying the trees are dying. And what's concerning is, is that if we have something from an arborist saying these trees could pose a harm to people in the future, if we don't do anything about these trees, and they do in fact harm someone in the future, that person that gets harmed in the future will have a claim. So it's, it's, you know, it's not that we are like, ha, ha, we wanna burn down trees or cut down trees, like, we're not evil people. But you, I think what we have to do always is listen to what the experts say. I'm not a tree expert, but a, a tree expert has been consulted, and this is what their recommendations are, and that's why we go to experts, so we can follow their recommendations.
Tree expert also said that there are healthy trees there, and that.
And we're not touching.
Those will remain.
Healthy trees.
All, all the small trees are all gonna be there. That's not the, that is not, that's not what, that's not what the report is saying. Unless you have changed your plans.
I didn't use the word disgusting. I used despair. So just let, let, no, I want you to go back on the table. I didn't use the word disgusting. I could still be saying that in comparison to town, the park, where it's, it's bad, it's bad. And you know what? It is a personal opinion that I have a total right to. What I think we have as a tax base of Bogota, when you compare every other town, is disgusting. What I think that officials have offered Bogota to this stage, it's my personal opinion that it is disgusting. This should have happened a long time, Susan, okay? And there's a lot of other areas that I believe that is disgusting, and if I can contribute somewhat to those areas to try to help, but I just can't, there's just simply no way. You know, I respect you, I do. You're an attorney. You, you study. But what I don't really wanna fight with you is, you're not an arborist, and you're telling me here, over and over by way of your defense, that you seem to have a better opinion or study than a licensed arborist who will study probably as much as you did environmentally, to provide officials and developers these, these responses, and we're following them. I don't know how we're liable to the fact that we all know that branches have fallen in Bogota parks.
No, tree.
Full arch.
Full trees. Like, there's, there's been, there's been storms where full trees have fallen.
And as far as the few trees that have to be taken down, which are healthy, you do recognize that there was a magnitude 3 that serves not the purpose it was intended to. It has no real exit line. It goes around three or four trees, and it's really going nowhere. It, it doesn't happen. BD process doesn't happen. We, meaning the board and the engineers, the professionals, are gonna pipe beneath the ground so that becomes a more practical process that is supposed to happen. Those are really the healthy trees, because in, you know, in essence of the entire project, that's what has to happen. Further, we're finally joining a whole park together. Again, I, I knew that we only have one park. And I don't know, you know, you're saying, I don't know why would you say that, I have to be down there. I play soccer with all my kids. I play soccer. I coach a lot in Bogota. I've seen the bikes, you're doing with your son. I watch them, Lucas. I, I know, I'm down there. I often do go.
We've also seen kids break, break their legs there because there's so many bitches. We've seen a lot of things happen, and that's, that's the point where we wanna.
Like, most recently, Susan, over the last 13, 14 years working here. And listen, I'm just not gonna continue to go back and forth. I've never seen one of those games. So let's be very clear about the subject of what you're trying to do now. My years here, the games I go to, I know who I watch, and I know who I see.
Mr. Miranda? Mr. Miranda? Go ahead.
We're, we're putting piping, we're going over so that kids don't run up, not have to go around, and have to go to, so they can run up on the fields.
Yeah.
All, I'm just gonna finish, Susan. We're trying to do everything we can. I can't, I don't know how to make you happy, or anyone who feels, has the same sentiment as you do, but we're trying. And it's just.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you, you trying. I appreciate you trying. And I think, I think we, we all appreciate everybody trying, and of course, we all want improvements for the town. Some of us may just differ on the improvements, and as a taxpayer, and as a homeowner, I have every right to raise my voice. And maybe other people may wanna be silent, or maybe they're scared to go up in front of a board or a council. Okay, but I have every right in this democratic nation to speak up and to address elected officials, and each one of you are elected officials, right? And I think we all agree, yeah, we're a democratic nation.
We, we welcome, we welcome all your comments, and we welcome the comments of everyone.
You know, democratic nation, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I'm an arborist, but based upon the arborist report, the arborist has said that healthy trees should be removed too. Okay, so go back and read the report. I don't know if your plan, how your plan is gonna change or not. I, I'm not really sure. Okay, but that's, that's, that's what the report says, so just. Don't take, I, I'm, I'm not, then, then don't change. Don't change. Just come and sit there and watch on the day when all the trees get cut down, okay? You can all watch, okay?
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
So I just, I just, Ms. Harper, I just wanted to address the one comment, so I reiterate the issue with the documents deliberative until it's approved. This document allows us to go on the board's property, okay, implement the construction, maintain the property and use the property going into the future. It's the same agreement we approved substantially and substantively back in April or May or whenever it was. These changes, all they do is affect the term. I wouldn't even have brought it back in front of the board, except for the term, because there's no material change in here whatsoever. It's just making sure the board, the borough complies with its green acres provisions. Really, and that, that's it. That's, that's all that the change is really delved into. So that's the only reason it's back on the agenda is the term. Otherwise, we wouldn't even have it on.
I just wanna add, I, I think it's great when citizens do come and voice their concerns, and if people are scared or whatever, they shouldn't be, because we're all just your neighbors. Like, this, this isn't Congress, you're not coming to a congressional hearing. If people are scared and they're out there listening and they don't wanna come out, we're not scary, I promise. Just come out.
I welcome, I, I'm all about this discourse. I'm all about this discussion. I've always been. I'm not a quiet person, and nor do I think another person can be quiet. I just, when, when you can't do anything else, and you weigh the balances of who are we appeasing? One, or general, well, I have to do what's in the best interest of the residents of Bogota. And I know we love trees. I made that statement in the meeting yesterday. Our animal is a tree. Our animal is a tree. So I get the sensitivity. I get who we are. But a tree is not a taxpayer either, so, so when, when, when I have residents who are not afraid, I mean, I don't. I think I have people who go up at the council, I don't think I know, and they be one of us, I tell you, we're gonna break ground and make. The same people who opposed this are challenging us. So it's damn if you do, excuse my language, and damn if you don't. And you know what? I've always been a dumber. And if I promise you, if I look at you and I say, this is what you want, I will prevail, that's my intent personally. And it looks like it's the entire board's intent to prevail on this project, and do whatever, we're in a special meeting in August with most people on vacation. And everybody came back. I go back, everybody's lying back, trying to get this done, but we're just trying, Susan.
And to that, I'll also say thank you to Mrs. Harper, because she's here. She's not, she's not being a keyboard warrior like we all are against on a regular basis, so thank you for always attending on Zoom on a regular basis, also giving your input, because if we can't do anything, at least we can listen. And I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So any more? Motion to close?
Motion.
Alvarez, second Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sure.
No, that was.
He's trying to run.
It is hot.
For adjourned.
Motion.
Oh, okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Hold on, Olivo, motion Chavez, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.